All right, we'll call the meeting to order. This is the Great Barrington Planning Board's meeting for Thursday, April tenth. I'm using my outside voice. All right, so this meeting is being held on Zoom. This meeting is being recorded. Is there anyone else who's recording the meeting? All right, hearing none, we'll do a roll call attendance. Jonathan Hankin.
I'm here.
Malcolm.
Here.
Jackie Kane.
Here.
Pedro Patrano. Randy Nelson. Hopefully Jeremy will be trying to. Okay, excellent. No formates? No formates. Moving on to the minutes of March twenty seventh, do we have a motion to approve amended? Thank you, Jonathan.
Second.
Second by Malcolm. Any discussion on the minutes? All in favor? Any votes? All right, excellent. Move into our first order of business, Barrington Brook subdivision discussion of work completed to date. And release of covenants. Board may take action on an applicant's request to release building permit certificate of occupancy covenants for lots one A, one B, and two. Mr. Ward.
Thank you very much.
Introduce yourself for our people at home and for our secretary.
My name is David Ward. Barrington Brook. Jim Scalise unfortunately had a family issue. He was supposed to be here today, so I'm pitch hitting for him. And just to show you, we're finally almost done. You guys have put up with it for a long time. This is our latest house. The brochure is when I show you what we're doing.
I saw it today.
And that's, it's happening. We're almost ready to go. We're going for a CO hopefully in the next ten days, two weeks. It's ready for the finals. What we're here tonight, although we're here last. A release of right now that you all are holding four CEOs, building permits. On, we're here tonight to try to release three of them. The first one is lot one B is the most important. That's a vacant lot. And where that is. It's right next to the big house that's being built. And you've been out there. It's a brand new house going up, not ours. It must have been a one. And they want to buy from us a lot that'll buss it. They're not going to build on it, but what we need there, we need the partial release of the Form D covenant. In order to get it closed, they're the cash deal. They're going to close that right away. They're not going to build on it right now. They may down the road. We're looking. For lot number one A, which is right next to it. We're looking for a building permit. Going for a building permit and then a CO. Lot number two. Has been cleared. We're looking to go in for a building permit right away and then a CO. And then we'll retain one lot. Lot number five. Will be held back until we get the final order of conditions. We're close to it. Jim Scalise did a, they have a report that into you folks. And a lot's been done over the winter and last fall. We're finally getting things done and he said we're down to about nineteen thousand dollars of expenses to finish up. We finished the detention pond. Right there by lot number nine. All the landscaping plans are contracted with Greg Ward, Ward's Nursery. Under contract to slant him and he's going to hopefully plant him. Maybe next week, I mean, the way our weather's going, the frost is out of the ground. And it's time to start to get that done. We've got the little rain garden that we had to put in right at the end of the bubble across from Stan Brown's house has been completed. We've got. That's us. The one thing we've got to do is get the stop signs. We've ordered the stop signs and we've ordered the elementary. Big sign. And that should be in very shortly, but Jim's held that back. That's part of his dollar. That's part of his nineteen thousand that he got. The fire hydrants he had. You know, I've talked to like DPW, they're going to go ahead and test the fire hydrants in the spring. He thinks he'll do it probably in May when they do the rest of town. And that's where we are. And that's the name of the game. Any questions? You more than happy to answer anything you want.
Any questions by board numbers? Jonathan?
I drove by the other day, Dave, and the, because I was reading Jim's summary and it said that the pool area landscaping had been done.
It's been marked out, all staked out.
So those stakes are where the trees are going to?
Yeah, yeah. And we've had the homeowners look at them so they know where it's going to be. They want some screening done for the pool, which makes sense. So those are the stakes. We're going to do it along the parking lot plus out front. And we've got all native species.
Okay.
That'd be. It'll, it'll look very nice for this when they come back.
You're doing a lot of work there today. I guess you did. We're doing a lot of work there today.
Yes. Yeah, I'm doing the same. We were frozen, believe it or not. We're still either our general contractor and right now unfortunately it's mud city.
Oh, I saw a lot of dust. I think some of the mud had dried.
Yeah, it's going to be cleaned up next week.
Any other questions by the board? Any questions or thoughts by Mr. Rumble?
No, as Mr. Ward said. The board holds four lots under full covenant. They're looking to release at least three, at the very least, at least lot one B for that partial release. And I have that here today if the board votes and Chair can sign it.
Um, so do, let's see, so I personally am okay with releasing all three. Are we in agreement there?
Are you saying we've had enough of Dave Ward? No, we want to come back.
So the fact that the value of the remaining work would be more than.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah. All right, so then I would need a motion to, what is exactly the wording? A motion to release building permits for lot one A, lot one B, and lot two for Barrington Brook.
And certificate of.
And a partial release of the Form D covenant. So that. Lot.
One B.
One B can be sold.
And the partial release of the Form D covenant so that lot one B can be sold.
So moved.
Thank you, Malcolm. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Second by Jonathan. Kim, did you get all of that? Thank you so much. Any discussion on the motion? All in favor? Any polls?
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Appreciate it. Tell Jim you were faster than him in the last time you were there. All right, good luck to you. Thank you. All right, next item on our agenda is town meeting preparation. Language report and approach to town meeting. We have three items, right?
Yeah. Not much to say here, just to put on your radar that. As you know, you have three articles on the warrant for the main third county meeting starts at two o'clock. I'll draft the planning board report and which outline, which summarizes each article and your logic behind it and your recommendations to the town meeting. And. I'll have it for you so you can review it at your upcoming planning board meeting and hopefully approve it. And then. Issue it to the town meeting. And I think, I think at that time we can talk about who's giving what motions unless you want to do that now.
Now, can, can I ask you, are you allowed to lose, include photos in your? Preparation or whatever your crazy for this whole thing? The introduction for what we're trying to do. Have you ever done that before?
We, we sometimes if we've had something that was like more complicated, we've had like a couple of slides, maybe they could shown on the screen.
The planning board's report is typically just a written report. So that sort of fulfills the requirements of the general law. In terms of how the board wants to explain it to the meeting or in advance of the meeting. That's something we should discuss.
I was just thinking of the document that you're preparing to write.
No, that's more formal.
It's more formal?
Is there a matter that you think would be represented better in a visual fashion in terms of community education? And should we consider handout or some pre-meeting?
Because I just attended the Egremont workshop last weekend or the twenty fifth about a planning on for the planning board and what we're planning to do in the town. And I just found it incredibly helpful to see images. I mean, it wasn't like I was being, you weren't staying on the image that long, but there was a visual aid. If you wanted to go back and see it. And when they were talking about the cluster housing and it was just, what is that? What does that mean? What does that look like? Or anything if you're changing it or comparing it to court or something, you don't have to go that deep, but it'd be just a visualization. Is a, is a good thing. And I don't know if that would also help with the over notion of overlay and what it's covering. And what the zoning is underneath it or so all of that is kind of friendly and clarifying. So I'm just raising that.
Really? It's a great idea. I, I, I won't have time to accomplish that for you, so it'll have to be the board's, it'll have to be the board's initiative.
But you could, you could. You, you already have a, a map of the campus.
Yep.
And I think that's important to show because I don't know if people understand what two hundred and seventy-five acres is.
Yeah.
So it might be good if the person doing the introduction does the voted, you know, the introduction thing. And then when they do the, the. The planning board report, maybe we can throw up a. Yeah. Visual. But if we provide it to you, you could.
Pull it all together.
I have a, I have the, the campus one will be easy. We can do it aerial and have the map. That's, that's easy. But the cottage one may take a little bit more time, but even on that, the board, I believe, attended a seminar once on the cottage zoning.
There was.
Yeah, I think we had two or three images of.
Easy to use.
Yeah.
Easy to pull up.
Okay.
Got it.
And we have music too. We'd like to propose. I just saw Chris Blake.
Just rehearse it for next meeting.
We want to see if we can get some cease and desist.
You'll get them if you sing.
If we use music and then the artists aren't happy with this. That kind of.
No, that kind of scene. Oh, we, I thought we were going to perform ourselves.
By town meeting.
Get our, right up the past. Okay, all right, so. Um, do we need to pull together the cottage zoning images and get those to you?
I think I have those. It's easy.
You think you do? Okay.
We can send them to you again in one clean file that you pick your favorite.
I, you know, if you, but if you're doing other things like newspaper or anything like that. I'll leave that to you.
Does anyone feel like we do need to do any outreach in terms of the newspaper to support people on the items? We've done it in the past, but they. Everything seemed fairly non-controversial and I don't, wouldn't even say the campus overlay is controversial.
Well, one thing, what about the planning board as the SPGA as opposed to the select board and what we heard last week, the last meeting?
Perhaps.
I don't know how to make the case right now, but that might be a discussion point.
Well, we've kind of avoided making that a, an issue. We keep proposing it every few years. Changing the.
But could, you know, could we be prepared to, well, I don't know whether you've done this before. I know we've had a joint. Select board, planning board group or committee, and that's not worked particularly well, but would this be an instance where you would have a combined? Select board and planning board membership, not all together, but two people. I was just trying to make us flexible and visa the being that is one board.
Yeah.
Well, you can't combine.
No, you're like suggesting like a subcommittee for approvals. It's made up of both boards. That's not a thing. So.
It's not a thing.
Not for that kind of decision.
Well, what's likely to happen here is if somebody wants to make the select board the SPGA, they're going to have to offer an amendment. And that'll be voted up and down by a majority vote, but then, then it'll come back and we still need two thirds majority to pass the bylaw. But it probably, I mean, the bylaw will probably pass regardless of how the SPGA vote goes.
Sure.
Well, that's what's happened in the past anyway.
But I just, I've not been here that long, but I see the planning board presented as the SPGA and it never passes.
It does for some things.
We're the SPGA for some things.
Well, I noticed we are in there, but I'm just wondering.
Yeah. I'm, I'm, I'm less concerned about this one thing than the, the, the whole concept that the select board sets themselves up as, as SPGA for some of these controversial things.
So now I've been thinking controversial. I was just thinking about what Fred said about planning board being perceived as technical. And the select board having the skill sets, the politic.
I think it's, it's a, it's a person's opinion and I'm not too hung up. Over that person's opinion. I think, you know, we're all entitled to our opinions and that's fine. And that's how it'll play out on town meeting floor at the same time because we've been through this before. We've been to this road here.
I know.
And we keep pushing and they keep slamming us down.
I think it's perception.
Yeah, and if it doesn't pass for some reason. And we think that's the issue, then we can bring up the question.
No, that's. Yeah, it's never.
The SPGA isn't the. Yeah, I think it's.
Okay, we'll take you on.
Sure.
We're very clear in their response.
Okay, visuals are a great idea though. And, you know, anything to help people understand. So I appreciate that. All right, so next meeting we'll have more on town meeting perhaps and carry this item through to the meeting on the twenty fourth. Um, and then. Board subcommittee updates, issues and concerns. Pedro wanted to add a discussion on the forty-five room hotel motel limit. Pedro. Laura's yours.
So what I.
Can you speak up, Pedro?
What I want to discuss is not, is not the limit per se. But the effect of, of what something like the limit has. Potentially. This is come, the, the hotel limit has come up. Several times in the past two years in my private practice. Because in general, it, that. Low, if it's a low limit for most hotel operators to even consider a project. They always, all the people that I've spoken to are looking at sixty units or more in order to make a project work. So. If, if we want to have a discussion at some point about possibly amending the forty-five room limit, particularly, I think it might be useful to have the discussion because. It isn't, you are allowed or somebody is potentially allowed to ask for more if they, if. Only if they're in a historic building. So. Why again?
The reason that's in there, the reason that's in there is that we wanted. If hotels or motels are being built, we want them to be local. We didn't want them to be national chains. And, and that was the cutoff. For, for national change because they all require forty-seven or forty-eight rooms as a minimum.
Can we know if that's still a standard though? Because that's many years old now, right?
Maybe ten years old.
No, it's got to be more than that. It predates me.
But it sounds, it sounds like it might be a standard. Pedro's here in sixty year wards.
Yeah.
And the, and then the other thing is, is like, do we want? On the other side, like if you don't have the limit, do you just want the market to play out? Like what are the, like what number of rooms do we currently have? And is that sufficient?
Right, if I can, if I may, Jeremy, just kind of stay on, on the point that I wanted and that I want to make. And that goes to what, what you said, right? We want to have control and keep it local and the whole thing. I think not only with this, but a rule, but with really anything that we do and anything that might be present in the bylaw. We really have to think about what the economic implications are of something like this, right? If you think. Hotels are part of the tourist industry, which is our number one economic driver. You know, and we're limiting it to the point where we're not seeing any hotel activity that could potentially has huge impacts on our main street as well as our housing. Because, you know, if we had, if there was a hotel in town, for example. That was, you know.
Draw.
A draw, exactly. And there was a draw. That could open up housing. It could open up those houses that are being rented right now as short term rentals. It could. I'm not saying it would, but. I mean, you know, it's, it's just one of these. Conversations that I have with myself and I sometimes have with other people who are wanting to do business in town. That are running up against certain obstacles. That are in, in the end, you know, having potential economic impacts.
Have you talked to any hoteliers? Because. You're the only person who's made this mention to us and we have an approved hotel. In a building that's sitting right now and has now for a couple of years been sitting. So I'm just curious. We've also seen sort of the like revitalization of a number of motels in the area over the last couple of years. So I'm just.
Is there a demand?
Exactly.
That's, that's what my question is, is so like this is artificially a way to not have any more hotels, right? Effectively. And so what my question is, is.
Chain motors.
Well, yes and no, but if what Pedro's saying is even individual operators don't want to build anything that's less than sixty, then it's even stopping them from building. You know, unless we have some whatever, some big building that they can convert. And so. What, what I'm wondering though is, is, is there a need? Like housing seems to be like, you know, there's like. A need. And I think. The normal thing that's going to come up with these is that we have one of the, we proposed this, then we're going to have the current hoteliers that are not thinking they want to build a new hotel. They're going to come and say that, you know, we have enough already, you know, we're only at a hundred percent occupancy for this many days a year. And then, you know, and so. Like, I wonder, I wonder about that. And the whole idea of a hotel that's a draw, I mean, I think like, what is that? And to me, it seems like that is going to take away business from the other hotels, meaning the other hotels close. And then. Like, I, I mean, I'm just, I'm just not, I, I'm just not. I, 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 I just don't know well enough the demand. I mean, I know anytime I've had anyone visit and they, you know, it was never any trouble to find a hotel. And, you know, whereas and I've had, you know, I had a kid that was looking for housing in Great Barrington and it was like. You know, no, it was like there was no.
How many rooms are in the Red Lion?
Red Lion has a lot. It's, it's a lot.
Couple hundred, but they have outbuildings too.
Yeah, so they have.
You're also in Stockford.
Well, they're off, they're, they do own, they do own Prior Cliff. So.
I have, I have one thought that the optics here is that we want visitors to our town as long as they don't spend the night.
But is that really the case? Like, I, I'm just.
Stay in a motel.
But that, that's what I'm saying.
Wait, hold on, let's, let's run through it.
I mean, the hotels, the big hotels are being built on week seven where there's nothing being built here. So.
Because we got a Fairfield Inn and Suites a few years ago. So we've got. The, the inn, can't remember the name of the inn on Maple Avenue or no on.
Windflower.
With the wind, no, 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 no.
No, no.
What's the one here in the mix?
When. We right.
We've got the Wainwright. We've got the Diaz Inn, right? Then we've got going north out of town.
Well.
Well, I mean, approved as sorrels, but that's obviously not moving anywhere.
I mean, you can, you can point, I mean, we do have, we do have a bunch of hotel rooms. There's no question about that. But none of those have been built in the last.
But a bunch of them have been renovated. They added on the fourth or third story to.
Holiday Inn added on the fourth story.
Fourth story, third story? Third story.
Four figures about, right?
Yeah, I mean, they just redid the one out on. Uh, state going towards butter nut there.
Yeah, sunset.
Yeah, the hotels are getting revived, but that's happening.
They just redid the, I mean, all of those things now are, it's such a different mode that they operate on.
Well, it's nice, I, you know, it's nice to think a motel where you can walk in from the outside and you don't have to walk through a central corridor. That was a.
Well, you show up with a code now and you just.
I mean, Pedro, your goal is to sort of have discussion and see what, what would you like to achieve here?
You know, I guess, you know, what, what I was hoping we. And maybe I would raise some interest in is really. Thinking about the economic impact, not just the land use impacts, how things impact traffic and density and the rest of it. But what the economic impacts would be to anything that we potentially go into the future and anything that might be in books already. I mean, I cursor, I just did a first, I did a. Well, like this is an example of what I mean. There's an economic impact to not having. You know, hotel activity in downtown, for example. And we, you know, if VJ would, would have torn down that, that, the high school, he wouldn't have been able to do the building that he's going to build. Right? So I don't know. The point is that, you know, something with a limit. Where you have these kinds of artificial limits really, which we have to remember, zoning for the most part are all based on artificial limits. So it's made up. When you have these kinds of artificial limits, they have economic impacts, just like single family zoning or whatever, or, you know, large lot developments have economic impacts. And so that's all I was hoping is to kind of maybe raise your awareness and maybe.
So if we had a destination hotel. That people wanted to use and accommodate enough people, you were, you're questioning whether we could do that or support that.
Well, I mean, I'm saying that it'd be very difficult for an operator to come in and do that. Now, I. I, again, in the last couple of years, I've been. In conversations with people wanting to do that type of hotel with a quality restaurant and maybe a. You know, a spa or a swimming pool or something, you know, some amenities and they were interested in doing in close to town. But they wouldn't, they couldn't get past the forty-five room owner.
Well, that's what VJ was going to build and then he's backed off there in terms of the, you know, the high end restaurant and the. Uh, the recreational area is going to have a pool and all that kind of stuff. And that's all going there. And now he's got a Fairfield Inn, I guess.
Well, you know, his was one of the properties that, that was in question when I was talking to people. Because the reason that VJ can't do is not doing it is not because the market can't bear it or because there's non-market interest. It's that he just can't do it. It's hard. It's, I mean, I'm not going to get into what I know about him, but he, you know, he's. He has some, some restraints that are keeping him from doing the project.
It's a complicated piece of property to redevelop. Sure. Um, okay, well, I, I think, you know, where would you, when we, when we reconvene, we're not going to solve this this evening, right? So we raise it. There's probably a lot we should look at in terms of in the code, are there opportunities to create economic development? That may be a tact we want to take since we're going to be losing Simon's Rock and the. You know, the adjacent visitation and things like that, that it draws to the area.
Do we have a map of the town that gives all the available spaces for development and what codes?
I mean, theoretically, the zoning map, which we have, yes.
But does it actually indicate available spaces?
You mean undeveloped land? Well, so I mean, from mine and Pedro's standpoint, it. Whatever's there doesn't need to be there, could be easily replaced, right? Nothing is permanent. You would just tear it down and build something new.
No, I was actually, because I was going back to my Egremont experience because everybody kept saying, well, where can we build something? Now, what, what kind of space?
That's a lack of imagination. You can build something anywhere.
No, you need to be a bird to see what you're looking at. I mean, I'll, you play Google Maps or something, but.
A mass mapper, the state GIS system. You can zoom in on our town. It shows the parcels and it's an aerial image and it shows what's there now.
And something of the.
I will show you as soon as we wrap up the stadium. It's very easy to get to and very useful.
And okay, Chris and I just had a question.
Is this related to this topic? Okay.
I mean, is this some sort of? Market study-ish thing that we could, that the town could. Ask a Berkshire Regional Planning Commission to, is that something that they would do?
A hotel market study? Yeah. Is, you probably know, but it's. And it's. Too specific, but the market study, you just.
Yeah, again, this is.
But it doesn't really give you any understanding to the context.
I mean. I mean, my purpose to bring this subject up is not to only talk about the hotel limit. The hotel limit is just the, the one that's sort of mo- most glaring that I am aware. My purpose is just to get the economic vitality of the town in this board's. Per view, you know, in front of center, just like everything else that we consider when it comes to land use and the rest of it. But when we're considering things or when we're reading things or looking at things.
I mean, so we've purposely limited commercial, right?
So we are, we are way off topic. We are not gonna have an economic development discussion tonight, like. This is under the topic of board subcommittee updates, issues and concerns. Um, but I think. The takeaway is that we should probably flip through the code and look at it in terms of economic development and, and, and. We were thinking about doing that as part of the master plan exercise, right? So.
Now we could do it with recreational space, maybe.
All those things bring economic opportunities to our community. So, um, but, but yeah, let's, let's definitely do that. Thank you.
That would be a good topic for uh, uh, master plan review. Uh, the hotel real limit, is that really something that is uh, is a concern to people these days? As it was twenty years ago or whenever the.
Well, I think Pedro's broader thing is a good thing to bring up in master plan, the limits in general to economic development.
Yeah, I, I think we should, we should look at a whole, oh, broad range of economic development issues, but uh. Uh, this is definitely one of them that could be brought up during the master plan review.
Do you have any other, any other Jackie Ward or any other issues concerned?
No, I was just wondering what's happening with the um. The open space. Idea, even the companion activity with the master plan.
Open space and.
Yeah, you were looking for money from the state with that forthcoming or not?
We still don't have that money.
Are they holding it back because they don't know if they have the money or?
I, I don't know. I'll give you an update.
How much is that? How much are we looking to?
I don't have that number on here.
Cause that's something we could also ask the CPA for, correct?
I'd say if the other towns have done it, I'd, I'm sure it's correct.
Just following up, taking in the master plan relationship. Down the road and trying to find money.
Malcolm?
Um, I tried to get out of being uh, chair of the BRPC and failed.
And Pedro didn't help you?
No, I failed. I'm, I'm gonna be for another year. And then Buck Donovan from Lee is gonna be the uh. Vice Chair and then he's gonna take over his chair in twenty twenty seven.
That sounds like a great transition plan.
So like it though? You enjoy it?
Yeah, yeah, but I'm just, I'm, I'm, I'm so busy, I just, I. Yeah, worth it. Still wondering when I'm gonna retire.
Well, hopefully when you do retire, she still thinks that way, right?
Yeah, I'm seventy-six this year. I hope you stole some energy when I do.
No doubt you will. Jonathan, anything for you? No, Jeremy?
CPC map, but it was sort of uneventful, more or less just planning for.
Say that last part again, I didn't.
More or less just planning for town meeting or the lack of planning for town meeting, just the normal.
And uh, forgive me, I haven't kept up with CPC. Um, you have a slate of recommendations going forward?
Those could be the warrant, obviously, but they're on the CPC's webpage.
Okay.
What is it, what does it look like um, being held outside?
We're doing it outside?
It's not outside, it's, I was picnicking, I'm sorry, it's inside.
That's why you were thinking.
In the high school auditorium.
Except for the people that bring little kids will be the only picnics.
No, I kind of went with COVID.
Alright, um, okay, and I don't have anything from Lake Mansfield. Um, I think construction's wrapping up as far as I know. Um, the next meeting though is the twenty-four. Um, and I will be out of town. I can join remotely, but can you run the meeting? Here locally in, in the flesh?
With the governors um, signing the most recent open meeting law. Bill, you can continue to hold fully remote meetings in twenty twenty seven.
Okay.
So if that is, is needed.
Okay.
So have in person and for hybrid. As you've always created.
Just I think I can be an effective chair from my iPhone.
One of the things that's been proposed, which is being. Uh, strenuously objected to is that all meetings in the state should be hybrid. And that means, well. Uh, you know, you can, I mean, all, some of our meetings don't take, uh, many of our meetings don't take place in any place that has. You know, the owls and, and Zoom and, and the small towns don't have it at all, so.
Yeah, it's tricky. Um, I go to a lot of board meetings and on one hand, I like the hybrid meetings. Cause I do think it can reach a larger audience. Um, but on the other hand, I think when you have public engagement, it's difficult to adequately engage the people that are not physically in the room. If you have a big in-room presence, so I, I think it's tricky for whoever's moderating the meeting or chairing the meeting to like keep track of. You know, both audiences, cause they, they have different needs. And I, I just participated in a meeting the other night. Um, Tuesday night and I was remote and the presenter was gesturing to things, this here and this there. And like all of us who are online were like, oh, we have, and they weren't sharing anything on screen and so you just felt like you were in a black.
You needed instructors.
I texted somebody who I knew was in the room.
Would that include Malcolm Townmeet too? Like annual Townmeet?
I, I, I don't know that, but uh, the, this is the uh, all the town committees, it's, it's basically a. They're, they're, they're trying to restructure how, you know, local government forces to some extent, and this is one of their proposals, which is. Being. Objected to, but uh, sometimes we, we have to live with uh, bills that are passed by the eastern representatives.
Alright, anything for you, Chris? Town planners report?
Yes, so the board uh, wanted to have the public meeting for your ADA plan on Saturday the twenty-sixth. So we've gone ahead and scheduled that for one o'clock. At the fire station. A lot of other venues are taking that day.
Oh, but fire station's fun.
Fire station's a good, good venue and it allows us to um, broadcast it on Zoom simultaneously and stuff. Go hybrid. Um, so it's, it's not a planning board meeting, but I do hope that everyone of you is there um, as citizens. And Andy and his group from Berkshire Regional Plan will guide us through. And invite public comment. Uh, we'll get some notices out. Into the media and social media, so.
What time is it?
One P M.
One, thank you.
And this is, this is ADA?
Yes. So uh, that's all I have.
Okay, thank you so much.
Yes.
Did you have a question about that, Jeremy?
It's just special Town Meeting, we're gonna.
Yeah.
Since we're online.
Yep, okay, so next time a citizen speak and James, go ahead.
Hi, this is James, eighty-four North Plain Road. I just wanna say thank you for all agreeing to keep the meetings a hybrid, so thank you so much.
You're welcome. Any other comments?
How are you doing?
Um, hearing no comments, then we will adjourn at six thirty-nine.